Two business owners and one marina tenant. I was pleasantly surprised at the substantial agendas we've had, ranging from running a naming contest for the Backstreet Alley, to reviewing budget allocations, to previewing the city manager candidates. And council members regularly attend our meetings and engage with the community members on the CAC. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz has been an outstanding liaison to work with. I'm in favor of keeping the Citizens Advisory Committee for four reasons. We represent the community's interests in a very tangible way. We give our neighbors a voice at the council level. We provide community input to council decisions. And finally, we prepare members for continued engagement with the City of Des Moines. Thank you for considering keeping the Citizens Advisory Committee going.
Thank you, Colleen. Next up, Bettina Carey.
I have to order this a lot here. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Buxton, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, City Manager, Council Members, and Community. I'm Bettina Carey, a Des Moines Marina resident and a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. My comments are regarding committees and commissions. My notes were actually written in early February but are still relevant for tonight's discussion. Before launching any new committees or rebooting a planning commission, it is my opinion that we must first assess our city budget and capacity to support with dwindling staffing additional structures, including committees and commissions. I strongly urge that we carefully evaluate the true costs in advance as part and parcel, including staff time for recruitment, selection criteria development, and accountability scheduling before initiating a new planning committee. Otherwise, we risk diverting scarce funds from essential services. As a Citizens Advisory Committee member, I am deeply disappointed by how our committee has been underutilized. Instead of engaging in meaningful work, such as establishing frameworks to advance city initiatives or brainstorming strategies to revitalize our downtown core, we have been given minor tasks like selecting a street name. Our CAC, which comprises highly qualified residents, has been largely inactive for months despite our two-year service limit, leaving us with untapped potential and no clear direction. This raises a critical question. Is the proposed new planning commission destined to face the same challenges and lack of purpose if we do not first address the shortcomings in our current committee structures? I recommend that we leverage the existing CAC to conduct the necessary groundwork to determine the feasibility of starting another committee or moving forward with a planning commission. Finally, I ask, given our council's current approach, will advice of any new committee truly be considered, or will it simply fall on deaf ears? If new committees are formed without proper support, financial backing, and clear mandates, we risk creating yet another layer of bureaucracy that lacks real influence. And I thank you for your time and attention. I also really think that it does take a budget, and since it wasn't budgeted to have these extra committees going forward, we're going to have to come up with a budget from another source of money. And we have the optics that if we've taken away from Health and Human Services, and then now we're going to find money for other committees, it just doesn't look right. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody who came to the meeting tonight expecting to make public comment but did not realize that you needed to sign in in order to do so? All right. Pass that back. So, we move on to the next segment of the meeting. We are entering into our discussion items. And the first discussion item, for the first time on the agenda, is with regard to remembering Stephen J. Underwood. So, going to begin with a story. In the early morning hours of March 7, 2001, Des Moines Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood was killed in the line of duty while working to protect and serve our community. MPO Underwood served at the Des Moines Police Department for six years. He's survived by his wife and son. Approving this proclamation tonight would formally recognize March 7, which is tomorrow, 2025, as a day to remember Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood. So, first, do I have a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Go. Do you have it in your...
Yeah. My is to approve the proclamation recognizing March 7, 2025, as a day to remember Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood.
Have a second. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second. Any discussion? Go ahead. Councilmember Mahoney.
I happen to know Officer Underwood on a personal level when he lived in Maple Valley when this occurred years ago. But the former mayor, Dave Kaplan, when he was talking to me about running for office, one of the things he asked is that we always keep his Officer Underwood's name in memory. It's a difficult thing when somebody goes out every night and risks the fact that they could lose their life sacrificing themselves for the safety of us. And while this is a tragedy, I think we all need to remember that each of our officers every night and every day are doing this very thing, along with our firefighters. And this is what I call a worst-case scenario of the situation, that they go out. But when you see an officer, thank him and appreciate him for what they do. Support him in any way you can. And in this particular case, we have the Stephen J. Underwood Park, and there is a scholarship fund with dollars for scholars. That's the Stephen J. Underwood Fund, and if you get the urge, please support that in his honor. Thank you.
Any other comments, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
You know, I would echo a lot of what was just said by Councilmember Mahoney. We are very fortunate that we have people in this community who are willing to put their lives at risk to protect us. Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood unfortunately was killed putting his life in a position to protect us. And this is an important proclamation to remember that day. So, I fully support this.
Councilmember Harris.
I would just add that there is a really outstanding monument to the officer at the entrance to the park that bears his name, and I encourage everyone, next time you enter the park, you know, just stop and take a look at it. It is a wonderful piece of public art, and it's one of the best pieces of just public facilities in the city. I think it's just a fitting tribute. So, stop and take a look at that, if you would. Thank you.
All right. So, because it was already mentioned at this point in the agenda here, I will just reiterate thanking Councilmember Mahoney for bringing forward the... There is several staff members and/or council members do contribute to this Dollars for Scholars Fund that is given to a senior graduating. Each year, somebody can apply for... A student can apply for it who is planning to enter the criminal justice field. And so, if any staff member or council member would like an auto deduct, that's available through the city. And if any community member is interested in contributing to this Dollars for Scholars, you just Google Dollars for Scholars Des Moines, and you can find out on that webpage how you could contribute to that. So, thank you very much for that. I will go forward to read the proclamation. Whereas, while patrolling the city in the early hours of March 7, 2001, Des Moines Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood stopped to question four juvenile suspects on Pacific Highway South. And whereas, Master Police Officer Underwood recognized one person as wanted for an outstanding felony warrant. And whereas, upon initial contact, Master Police Officer Underwood was senselessly attacked and struck by gunfire, causing his tragic death. And whereas, Master Patrol Officer Underwood was taken instantly from his family and our community. Whereas he was a dedicated public servant, devoted son, loving husband and father, and whereas the City of Des Moines continues to remember the life and the loss of Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood after 24 years, you are not forgotten. Now, therefore, the Des Moines City Council wishes to recognize March 7, 2025, as a day to remember Master Police Officer Stephen J. Underwood. His service to our community and department will never be forgotten. Signed, the 7th day of March, 2025. Oh. So, the motion was made and seconded and discussion. So, all in favor, raise your right hand. Six-zero. Thank you. And Chief, I've got one for the family. And so, we're going to receive a presentation from the City Manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get started, I want to recognize one of our new employees, Jeff Schneider, if you want to wave, is our new... Jeff is our new Senior HR Analyst. We're super happy to have him. AJ is probably the happiest to have a fellow HR person. But we just wanted to briefly recognize him. He started last week, and like, already feels like he's been here forever, although he is HR Jeff, and I don't know what to call money Jeff, OG Jeff, not paying attention to this discussion Jeff. So, anyways, just wanted to recognize him, since you'll be seeing his face around City Hall.
He's not from Ohio State, is he?
Nope.
Sure.
Quick question, if I may. Just in 25 words or less, what does an HR analyst do?
Jeff, will you come on up?
No, no. No, no.
He will. He will. Come on, you asked the question.
You're mean.
I'm not. He likes it.
He does?
She's just giving me an opportunity to explain, right? Yeah. So, an HR analyst will do all the general functions of human resources, from trying to help people locate their benefits, to trying to answer questions about policies and procedures, and do everything that I can to just make sure we have operational excellence here for supporting all of our wonderful staff, who in turn hopefully support the mission of Des Moines.
What a great job!
Excellent. Excellent. So, we are very happy to have him. We will now start item number two, which is a discussion on developing a strategic plan. If Tara, you want to get that started? So, this item is... I'm sorry. Is one I put together that really... The purpose of it is really just to have sort of a discussion, to get your initial thoughts on going through this process, and to hear, if you are interested in doing it, some initial thoughts you may have on sort of the scope of which you want to do a strategic plan, the depth, the level of public engagement. So, again, this is really a discussion item. I'll present some background information and hit on some areas, but really looking for feedback to give me some direction on how to get started, if the council would like to. So, first, what is a strategic... I'm going to cover kind of what is a strategic plan. That can be a very broad kind of topic. In your packet, I included some examples from other communities. And really, those were chosen just to give you a sort of sense of what's kind of, you know, the quickest, kind of, you know, most initial starting place level of a strategic plan to something that's very, very robust. So, the purpose of those is really less for you to look at what they specifically listed, and more just to get a sense of what those could look like. I'll briefly talk about the process, how we can include public engagement in this, and then, again, looking for some discussion and some next steps. So, I hit that sort of what I'll be looking for from you all. So, in November, and I believe it was even like my first week of work, you all did your mission, vision, and values exercise, where you all, as a group, talked about some of the sort of core things for what you see Des Moines' future being. The strategic plan is really the next step to go a lot deeper on that. It's really taking these ideas and putting them into action with real specific priorities and goals that then really form the work plan for staff. It is a long-term vision outlining the city's priorities and goals. You'll see this in most of the examples I sent. Some of them are a two- or three-year lookout, some are, you know, maybe five years at max. So, there's sort of, you know, that doesn't maybe seem long-term, but what you'll find is communities that have done this a long time, at the core, the real priorities don't change that often. Maybe how you go about it, or the level of service to enhance them will kind of be modified. But usually, the community's priorities sort of remain that are priorities over the long term. Also, it's helpful because it identifies sort of the most important issues. So, even in the short few months I've been here with you all, there's a lot of needs, there's no shortage of good ideas from the council or the community. And so, what this really does is help you refine what do you want to focus on. And it should include some measurable goals. So, it shouldn't just say, you know, "We want public safety," but it's like, what does that really mean to you? And then, staff help you really fill in the blanks on what are some real specific tactical things we can do to achieve that. It does help with decision-making. And then, I think one of the things that's really most important is that this should become part of the budget process. So, since the city has really limited financial resources, this helps us make sure that as you all go through budgets, as staff sort of go through operations, we're making sure we're putting our limited dollars in the places that you all have identified are the most important to you. And finally, I wanted to say, this is different from the comprehensive plan. They can sound sort of similar. The comprehensive plan is primarily about land use and about sort of a community's built environment. This is really more so, as a city, what is important to you, and as a city government, what are we providing people? What do you want this community to be? So, it is different. So, why are we talking about this now? So, first, I heard a lot about this from the council and the public during the interview process, of sort of this desire to see progress made on big initiatives, and that can be hard to do when you have so many things coming at you. And so, going through this process and really kind of forcing everyone to crystallize what's most important, I think will help progress be made on some of those important goals. I also heard a lot about the desire from the community for more input, and they would like the opportunity to engage about issues that are important to them and give, you know, feedback on really what they see priorities. This process is a great way to do that. And finally, our ongoing financial challenges truly do make it more important now than ever that we are really tying limited dollars to what you all have identified as the most important thing. I'm going to flip through a couple of examples. Again, the words on them are less important. I want you to sort of think about like the depth, maybe something a city went to. So, this is Shoreline. They have like 18 kind of goal statements. Beneath them, they are very specific action items that are sort of the to-do list for staff, and those action items change pretty regularly. But the council, my understanding is, every couple of years really reviews the big goals. Another way sometimes cities will take a look at it, this is Bothell's, is they'll sort of start with a vision statement, and you'll see the next kind of talk about a general idea, right? "We want to connect neighborhoods," and there's a narrative there on what that really means. And then, they'll sort of dive into specifics on how they're going to go about that. This example, and this one I'm very familiar with, this is Cedar Park, where I was for 17 years. So, I'm not saying it's the best, but I did include it. But it was very good. But this one is very operational, for the good and bad of that. So, the document has always seemed very operational and granular on like specific items that were to be worked on. That was important in that community. But you can sort of see the big-picture goal, service and fiscal excellence. What does that mean to the council? And then, there's sort of these specific objectives, and then those strategies, which is really the to-do list, would sort of get updated and change. The City of Renton has a business plan. It's pretty high-level, but it's also a succinct one-pager, as succinct as many, many words in three columns on one page can be. But, you know, that's another kind of tactic to look at. We talked a little bit about measurement. Candidly, I don't think we're quite ready to tackle this, but I want to show you maybe what a Cadillac option a couple of years down the road is. This is Issaquahs. It's common. Many communities do this, where you take then your strategic plan and you really tie it to specific metrics, and then you actually have a live kind of dashboard where the public can see what progress you're making. So, this is definitely a labor-intensive thing to do, but I want to show it to you because I think it's something that maybe down the road we can really get to. Maybe initially, we start with just some milestone and goals, and hopefully, we can get to a place where you have something live like this, that really the public can see pretty regularly how you're doing. So, the process. Tonight, I'm hoping to sort of hear the council's interest in doing this, and what you would like to see as being the purpose and scope of this. You know, as you think about a strategic plan for Des Moines, what does that look like to you that would be helpful? After this conversation, assuming the council's interested in moving forward, we will look at really assembling the right... I'm saying facilitation team, but it really is usually a consultant firm that does do both the facilitation with the city council and to some extent can help with public engagement as sort of we see how the conversation tonight goes. But there is a lot of benefit to bringing in an outside facilitator for this. It's someone that has probably seen 200 of these and worked with 100 different city councils. And so, they are really skilled at kind of working with a team. I have been through a strategic planning process more than 15 times, but I need to be part of the process with you all and not trying to lead this group, you know? So, I think it is helpful to have an outside group lead that. And then, once we sort of get a sense tonight of the sort of scope the council wants to go through, it helps me determine the timeline for how long this can take, and I'll talk about that in a moment, kind of the range and the costs, which I'll hit on to in a second. Then, really, it is not uncommon to have some type of strategic planning retreat with the city council. There's usually some pre-work that's done ahead of time, but that's really where you determine the priorities and goals at the policy level. Typically, then, staff go and come back with really specific action items or like tactical operational goals that would then be brought back to sort of make those goals a reality. And then, of course, the full plan does come back to the council for review and adoption. And then, we began actually implementing. Throughout this process, we'll definitely need to be conscious of our financial constraints, and so that will be a big part of the conversation throughout the whole thing. We want to make sure what's put in this plan, if the council chooses to pursue it, are attainable, are reasonable for both our staff capacity and our financial capacity. So, that'll be sort of an ongoing dialogue we'll have during the process. And then, really, the plan serves as the foundation for staff work plans and subplans. So, I've gotten a few questions of, "Well, we have so many plans, why do we need another?" And I get it. I know. It sounds like planning and planning and a lot of like bureaucratic speak. But really, the strategic plan should be like the center spoke, or whatever, the center of the wheel, and then the other plans are reflective of that. Right now, there isn't really something tying everything together, and that is really valuable. So, after that, we will also track progress and how we're doing. That should be something that is transparent. You all get updates, the community gets updates pretty regularly on how we're doing. And then, again, like I said, we need to align this with the city's budget and resources. And finally, it is a living document. So, it gets reviewed and updated regularly. You know, it is not uncommon, I think, that you put something on there, and 18 months down the road, something is different, or maybe there's some new condition where that really no longer fits, you know, some of those sort of more granular objectives or action items. And so, that's normal, to sort of find some things, "Well, we thought we were going to do that, but then this happened." So, again, it's not set in stone. Public engagement can... There's a whole spectrum of public engagement you can have during this process. It can be done at various parts of the process, depending on sort of how big of an effort the council wants to take. I would recommend we... And we don't have to do it tonight. I'm open to hear initial comment, just, you know, thoughts on public engagement. We would have more conversations on really exactly what we would do. But it's important to hear from the council, what is the specific feedback you're looking for? And then, we'll find the right method and the right timing to get that information. So, if you, for example, want input on the priorities, maybe we do a community survey at the beginning. Or if you want the plan to really be driven by the public and then just check in with you, that is a great project for the Citizen Advisory Committee. Or if you want, if you think it's really important that the public sees progress on the action items, then maybe we do invest in a performance dashboard. These are just examples, but they're really to show you that there's no like one-size-fits-all, but it's definitely something that, you know, I think the public is eager to participate in, and it seems like the council would like to have from some pretty solid public engagement, so that'll be part of this as well. So, depending on the breadth and depth of this type of effort, the cost can be anywhere between $15,000 to, you know, $50,000 and up, if you want to really go all out. I do have some funding in the budget that was set aside for economic development. And over the last couple of months, I feel like it is hard for me to know how best to utilize those limited dollars on economic development without really knowing where the city council and the community wants to go. So, I feel like it is actually more prudent that I first find out from you, big picture, what is the priority, and then let me figure out an economic development plan that reflects that. So, I would actually propose using that funding source for this planning effort. The timeline is usually six months to a year, and then you can see what drives the cost and time. It's the amount of public engagement you want to have. It's the level of performance management reporting you want us to integrate. And then, really, it's the amount of time the city council wants to devote to the process. So, in some cases, a council really wants to do one intensive workshop, and then they'll see the document at the end for, you know, review and approval. Other times, I think councils want to really have this iterative process that they're part of. So, it runs the range. So, with that, I'm hoping to sort of hear your feedback on whether or not you want to go through this effort, and sort of some initial thoughts on what's been presented.
Yeah. And sort of to clarify, so everybody understands, is this a citywide plan? Is this a particular part of the community? How does that factor in to putting together the strategic plan?
Yeah. That's a great question. It is citywide, but it should really be relevant to the services the city provides. So, you know, it's really probably not that effective of our time to talk about, you know, goals you have for the education system, or, you know, we just heard from South King Fire. We don't really need to wade into what we think they should be doing. But it should be community-wide and reflect sort of all the areas you all want to focus on, that really we control or have service over.
Any other questions at this point? So, what I recognize is your questions, the feedback on the strategic plan, I guess, are you wanting feedback, or do we go to the one-pager Renton? Do we go to the kind of a Shoreline-Bothell idea, or the Issaquah labor-intensive Cadillac version? So, are you looking for like feedback on one of those three approaches?
Yeah. I mean, I think I'm looking for feedback, first and foremost, is this an effort the council wants to pursue now?
Okay, let's do that first.
Let's start there.
Is this an effort... Put it this way, does anybody not want to move forward with this strategic plan? Okay, you got that one.
Okay. Great. And then, it's really of, when you think of a strategic plan for this community, what do you think's most important to include? I.e., I really want us to focus on, you know, goals that are very ambitious and aspira... I'm making something up, just to give you an idea. But like, I really want to focus on something aspirational, like, you know, I want this document to really look at like, what is our future 10 years down the road, and what are we really doing at our marina? Or, when you think strategic plan, are you like, "I am very focused on our city's finances, and I want the real backbone of this document to be things we can afford." I need to sort of hear like, how much do you want to dream versus operational? It just gives me sort of a sense of kind of the general interest level where you all are.
So, were you saying, when you talked, when you categorized the document you worked on from Cedar Park, and you used that word, "operational"? So, you're saying that was a more of a concrete, financial-type document? Were there dreamers, dreamer sentences? Were there dreamers, dreamer sentences there?
There there were some dreamers, but it was very, there were dreamers, right? Because they did great things over many years. But it was very focused on, I want to talk about specific thing. The councils always felt like, I want to make sure this document includes very specific things that we can get done in three years. And I can say, check done. If you look at some of the other documents, they're much more vague, right? So it'll say, a safe community for all, right? And then it's very like up to us to sort of interpret that. And both are okay, right? And both serve a purpose, but it's sort of which one gravitates to you. And if you did flip through those examples, were there any that you sort of liked something from?
Can I ask you a question then, quickly in organizing this response? I would like to ask the council if they would like which level? That way, when we give you input, you can put a a ba- a barrier up that says, I can do with the option you picked. I can do more than what you just recommended. Or if there you start getting too many, you say, well, now we're at the point of a Cadillac. So decide what you want, is that?
That sounds great.
That's a good idea, council member?
It's not a point of order, it's just a question.
Yes, it is, this is a study session and we should be able to have a a free flowing.
Yeah, so it's not a point of order, just talk.
Okay, great, okay, but not, you know, just the moment that you start putting it into bullet points, you're basically narrowing down the discussion. I I do have four things. I've shared this with Catherine. You know, we've had three paid communication studies in the last twelve years, and the net yield has been zero. So I am somewhat, you know, that's kind of where I start with. I would prefer, I'm looking at our five-year forecast from the last budget. And I would prefer that we start with the money. Frankly, I look at where we're at and we need, pick another number if you disagree. But we need at least five million dollars a year more in structural revenue. In order to get back to where we thought we were in twenty nineteen in terms of staffing, amenities. All the stuff that people thought we were driving to. That's really the gap, and that's in twenty twenty-five dollars. So I think it would be fruitful to start with, we need thirty, thirty-two million. How do you get there? And then work back from there so that our eyes are not bigger than our stomachs. Okay, and so I have said to you, find out what the actual revenue potential is. What the possibilities are for obtaining them. And whether it's good, bad, or, you know, people like it, they don't like it, but they'll know what the options are. And if they say, whoa, we won't want to do that, then fine, then you scale back the needs, wants and desires to fit that. Okay, but we can all agree that the model we're on now is not sustainable. We will need more money, and that should condition the entire discussion, work backward from there. I support the idea of a of a plan. It needs to be like all of our key documents, persistent and consistent. Whatever we decide on has to be something, it can it can change, it can flex over time. But the presentation, something needs to be where we can actually look five years from now and go, oh, okay, apples to apples. What did we hit? What did we miss? One of the most cogent things that D P W Slevin has said is that, you know, you have this twenty-year thing and councils come and go. But there is some general notion of like, this is what we're driving towards, and here are the metrics eventually to get there. And last but not least, a a friend gave me a wonderful gift. The two hundred dollar Chat G P T reasoning version. And I'm not kidding here, I'm happy to donate it or spend two hundred bucks. Dump every planning document in this city into it over the last twenty years. And let it come up with a first pass. And my guess on looking at it in terms of engineering and other disciplines, my guess is it's going to give you an eighty-nine. Not kidding. And that could be a first pass that if nothing else, it it helps the facilitator. With, you know, coming to something quicker. But that's two hundred bucks. That's it.
Councilmember Nutting.
My comments are is it, I I think it needs to be somewhere between the Cadillac version and just a one-page kind of thing. You know, but not long and drawn out. Second off, I I do believe it has to be fiscally driven as well. And it has has measure, have has to have measurables. Goals that we can, don't, I don't want to drill down to the granular level so much. But I want there to be something that in three years, we can check that box and say, we accomplished this. And I think we can get there without a granular level of things. So those are my comments.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I I don't think we need the Cadillac version at this point. I think a few pages, probably more than one, however, because I do think we need to have measurable standards. Something that we can say that is objective. I think that while it's fine to say we need money and pick a number, we need to figure out what, how to get to that number. The the devil is in those details. So it's got to be focused on what's realistic for us to to do, rather than just saying, here it is and starting from there. And then, you know, kind of thirdly, it needs to be something that we get prioritized properly. And that means we need significant community input on that process. And so what that ultimately looks like, if that's using the C A C to do that, if it's a survey and other processes. Whether that's a big public meeting, I'm not, I'm not quite there yet on what the way to do that. But I do think that we need to make every effort to include the community in this process. And then the window needs to be about three to five years. Somewhere in that timeframe, depending upon what particular goal is. Some are five-year goals, some are might be three-year goals. That's my thought.
Okay, great. Councilmember Mahoney.
I agree, somewhere in between probably is the best at best approach there. I obviously sustainable revenue and management is important, but I think the turn is, I see somewhere in this document, at least the initial part of of what would be economic development. In assessing our downtown waterfront, Redondo, Pack Highway, Business Park, and all the potential areas of revenue. That would include, you know, trying to bring businesses to our community and development and all those kinds of things. Something in that game plan to get things rolling. I think we got a tremendous amount of opportunities, but we want to be ready and have the have the brochure when people show up. Public safety is always one. I think as as we got a review of some of the crime stats today, what is really a a true need to maintain safety for our residents? And as far as the process, I thought interviews with council members, interviews with staff. I think staff are some of the best people we sometimes forget to use and their and their knowledge. The C A C is survey and possibly a public meeting. The survey I like because a lot of the the moms and dads with kids and so forth, they, the Marina was an example where we got a lot of our answers from people who couldn't attend the public meetings and things. That was like the Spray Park was the number one item recommended, and a lot of that came from the survey. So I want to make sure we capture those groups, but I think using all of them in some capacity would be beneficial. That's what I got.
Councilmember Grace Motsui.
Thank you, I'm I'm excited that we're having the opportunity to have a free flowing discussion about a strategic plan and its potential value to the city. I would agree that I think mid-range is a good, not a Cadillac, but also not a jalopy is a good place to start. But I think in addition to the comments that have been made, I don't think we can lose that idea of a long-term goal. What is the, what is the, five years is great as an elected official. You want to be able to check some boxes and say, here's what I did for you in the last three years. But I believe that most folks here do have a common vision for what Des Moines could be. We just need to figure out how to get there and also how to best measure our progress. And so I don't want to let go of the aspirational or that vision part of where are we going? When you build a roadmap that only goes five years, you you'll have to do another one and then another one. And then, I don't know which way you went, you might turn west at some point and end up someplace totally else. That was a bad metaphor, but it's, that's what I've got today. I want to also point out, and I'm excited to hear folks here at the dais talk about a level of public engagement. I'll point out, I think, something that council member Oxier has really impressed upon me. And that is that our neighborhoods are like micro communities. They very much have different needs, they have different issues that are facing them, they have different populations. I mean, sometimes really different populations. And so we have to ensure that those are some of the folks that are at the table out of nine different neighborhoods that are being heard. And the approach might be very different for Upper Woodmont than it is for Pack Highway than it is for North Hill. And, you know, I think sometimes the folks on one hundred and ninety-fourth don't even think they're in Des Moines. Because rarely do they feel like they're included. So we can't make sure, we have to ensure that all folks from all those range of neighborhoods get a chance to give some of that input. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxier.
Yes, thank you, and I apologize for being late.
We're just glad you're okay. I was getting worried about you.
Don't lock your keys in their in your truck.
Oh, man.
I I agree with Councilmember Harris that we do need to figure out, you know, where where the money is and where it's coming from. I mean, that's, we can, we can dream all we want, but if we can't finance it, that's fine. But it is, it is important that we do include the public in the process. I don't know that that, you know, we really have a grasp on, you know, where the public really wants us to go. We all have our little spheres of of communications and thoughts on on, you know, exactly where we go. I live all the way in the south end and have, you know, don't really grasp the individual needs and stuff of people all the way to the north end. We all have, it's a long, long, you know, city. And it's sometimes hard to understand exactly what the other people are, their lived experiences within the city. So I I think we're, we are going to have to go with a a middle ground. We don't have to go the the really deep route. But definitely, I think we need to figure out, you know, what is possible first. And we may have to decide, you know, at some point along the line that, okay, we need to do X, Y and Z. As far as as meeting the, you know, the potential. But I'm interested to hear what we all collectively, you know, our thoughts and everything are 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 there. Because it is, you have seven of us, and you're going to get seven different perspectives, so.
Councilmember Harris.
So at the risk of, you know, keeping towards the space magic. The first council meeting I can recall attending was Ed Pina making a motion to, you know, yank out the sling launch in two thousand and eight. And I'm one way or another, I've attended, watched every single one of these darn things since then. I encourage you to get the ultra reasoning version of Chat G P T. Because my experience of all of that stuff, you know, doesn't resonate. But you can literally pour in every frigging city council meeting minutes and all of that stuff. And what I hope to convey is that it's like there was this Facebook post the other day about, you know, well, why don't we have more apartments? Or why don't we have our downtown? Or there's this constant why and constant, you know, mythos about it. And the fact is, our zoning may not be like tip-top, but we've offered variances. We've had discussions with tons and tons of people. But it's just a fact that unless you attended all all of these, unless you were silly enough to be me, toothpick city guy, and watch all of these things, it's an abstraction. But we've offered a deal to, you know, and there's been any of number of meetings where someone said, oh, yeah, we're in negotiations with X, Y, Z. And somehow objectively, you need to see that for yourself. So you, so that we can look at what is it the developers saw that or didn't see? Okay, you need to hear what the real possibilities are along Pacific Highway with this, you know, cross-cut border. What effect that has happened on us over the years, not having control over even the corner of K D M? Somehow, that information has to be put together and learned from. Otherwise, you keep, people keep having the same discussions over and over again. Well, I heard that it's building heights, well, I heard this, or I heard about these land trusts, or I heard, I heard, I heard, I heard. Okay, the information is actually in there. You just have had to be silly enough to attend like X hundred of meetings and find out what, why things are the way they are. Because they'll tell you what the actual revenue potential is. And you find out what that is, and then the plan will write itself pretty much. Because if you look at our park and rec master plan, it's pretty fabulous if we had the money to do it. It's pretty good. We have come up with some really good ideas. We've had good Marina master plans. People, they are, we are a series of micro communities, we're twenty-three annexations. But the fact is, everybody wants, they're here, there's a surprising commonality for why people chose to live in Des Moines. It's safe. They want the roads to be taken care of. They do want to park within six blocks or whatever the, you know, back standard is. People want most of the same things. When we go on about the waterfront all the time, really, that's an amenity or it's a vehicle to drive more revenue. I'm not sure where the actual reality comes down on, but most of the people don't live near the waterfront. And so they just want the meat and potatoes services that every community wants.
So your recommendation?
So my recommendation is just, just listen to what I'm saying and try to, you know, use the tools that are available in twenty twenty-five to really synthesize how we got here and not continue doing more studies, you know, to try to figure out why things are the way they are. The truth is already there for you. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see another handle. My quick comments are that I like a little bit, at least a one overarching umbrella statement that does recognize what or who Des Moines is, like, what what are we? What makes us special? Because no matter how much we want to create a ski lift. Because no matter how much we want to create a ski lift, we will never be able to do that, right? I think Councilmember Grace Motzwi said something like that. So if we can recognize what makes us special, and then underneath that, that can guide, guide us, which includes kind of a vision statement. It would tie into our vision, mission values that we came up to. Then, then I feel, I feel like it needs a kind of an integrated component of capital investment and revenue generation possibilities. I think our revenue generates, generating possibilities will most times or many times tie into capital investments. So how those things tie together as we move forward in three to five years? And long-term, right? If we say a long-term thing that's more than five years would be rezoning a segment of town because we have a vision of creating something different, right? So that's going to last longer than five years, but it will guide 20 years of investments. Revenue generating. And then, yeah, I am also in favor of not one page, but not the Cadillac.
Got it.
So, and I think that's it for me. Any other closing, do you feel like, oh, and then I think another question you had is, do you want, you recommended a facilitator. We have, do have a recommendation for ChatGPT. One, one caution I have of leaning too much on something like AI or ChatGPT is because there's been a lot of input here about the significance of live community engagement and input. So do you want us to, do you want direction about a facilitator? Or do you want to wait for another conversation to bring something forward?
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, Councilmember Harris.
Pick somebody that we have never worked with before. How's that?
Got it.
Okay, so that looks like a little bit of, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I really want this document to be a forward-looking document, not just a rehash of everything that hasn't worked before. And it needs to start in 2025. Because this is the community that we serve right now. And it needs to be a forward-looking document. I think that's a, that's a piece to pass on to the facilitator, if you will.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Pick the best consultant.
Any more input on facilitator? She's looking for a little bit of.
I would be in favor of a very good consultant that we have never worked with before.
I think based on what you all want, we're going to need a very, very good team.
Okay.
But no, this has actually been super helpful.
Okay.
It does tell me you want a basis of financial forecasting, but we shouldn't live just there. We also need to know what we're going to do with that. And that actually is helpful, and I have some ideas already, so.
Good, you have everything you need there?
I do. So my next step will be to sort of, let me think on this, and let me, I need to keep kind of talking and assembling some teams out there. I anticipate I will probably come back with an update when like we're going, we're going to do a procurement for this. I think that's going to really get us the biggest kind of snapshot of who's out there. And so I'll give you all updates as we go. And then additionally, we have at the recent Economic Development Committee, we talked a little bit about some financial forecasting. I've gotten some initial proposals in on that. And so I think that will come back to you first, and that will be something that will be a great basis to jump off of here.
Councilmember Harris.
So I expressed a certain concern as to the exemplars you provided. It may be that, you know, people who do this can cover everyone from, you know, 300 Hooterville to Seattle. I mean, the skill sets may be consistent. But my concern was that I, the exemplars you provided did not really feel like they had much to do with Des Moines. And so across a lot of domains. And I understand, I, I just don't want the, I want the facilitator to the extent possible to have experience to the, with our kind of a situation rather than coming in, because all of us have unconscious biases. And I don't want somebody coming in saying, hey, I did a great job for Bothell. Well, Bothell has car dealerships and tech bros and all kinds of wonderful things. We love Bothell out there, but they're not Des Moines. And they don't have an airport, a marina, they don't rely on transit. And so, you know, I'm just, I don't know how consultants, what if they have certain strengths. And to the extent possible, I'd like those strengths to correlate with the needs of Des Moines. Thank you.
We can absolutely look for teams that have worked with communities that are around this size or maybe going through financially challenging.
And by the way, you know, I mean, I may be asking for something, you know, there may not be that many firms out there, and so I may be too picky. But I'm just leaving it to you to take that into consideration.
Okay. All right. You feel like you've got good direction? Okay, so then we're on to the next discussion item, which is our committee reorganization discussion. And the purpose of this item is to hear a briefing about our committees, what exists, what could possibly exist, what exists in other places, just some options for rethinking what we do. So I'm handing that baton to the city manager and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a great lead-in. I was asked to sort of take a look at our committees and come up with an idea. So this really is, I don't view this as a recommendation that, you know, take it or leave it, and we're going to die on this hill. It is really a jumping off point for discussion, which is why I think this is great to have at a study session. So, you know, I've already kind of heard anecdotally through some of you all that, gosh, I think I want to do something different. That sounds great. Like, we're happy to do whatever works for you all. Am I, can you go?
Go backwards?
I can't. Tara and I were both quick with the slides. Okay. Well. Okay. Okay, so tonight, like I said, the recommendations are just sort of as a jumping off place for you all. Okay, I'm going to take it from here. Sorry. It's hard to be Vienna or whatever. Again, you heard it tonight from several of the citizens that just spoke, but reminder that you have just created two additional groups. The Airport Committee, which is council and citizen-based. We will bringing, be bringing you discussion on this to sort of get your final input on the formation of this group at next week's meeting. And then the Planning Commission, which we showed you a few meetings ago, will really need to be implemented kind of after the Airport Committee. It was the kind of priority order we received from the council. And that is entirely a citizen group. Okay. So let's first talk about council committees. And then we're going to talk about the appointive committees, which are the ones citizens serve on. As you all know, you currently have six council committees. They meet monthly. Each one has an agenda, a packet, a staff liaison, somebody from legal, somebody from the city clerk's office, IT staff support. So each one is kind of like a little mini council meeting and what we have to do to prepare for that. You see the six on the screen below of, you know, what you've got. So I talked to you all about how do you feel about these committees, what's working, what's not? And in general, the feedback I got was that sometimes the items can feel redundant, like they're presented at the committee, and then that very same night, in many cases, they're presented at council. So it can feel sort of like, what's the point of really contributing at this committee meeting? Or like the processes aren't always clear. We also got some feedback that some council members feel like they can't give early feedback or input on an item if they don't happen to serve on that committee. So frequently, things go to the committee first to sort of float out an idea. And if you're not on that committee, you may not really get a chance to give that input. I will say, it is not an insignificant impact on staff time and resources. I had the comment, I think yesterday, to the mayor that I would like to see the quality of our agenda packets continue to improve. I think we're doing great, so staff, don't freak out. But I think we could do those agenda memos even better and have more info and more depth. Candidly, three meetings a month with you all, plus six committee meetings, plus the boards that meet, is not insignificant. So that's something that I would throw out there, something to think about. I don't think it's a deal breaker either way, but it is another packet we have to make. I think also sometimes some of the staff indicated they feel a pressure to fill the agenda when they may, may or may not have something every month. So we looked at various different committees, which we gave you that sort of summary in your packet that was mainly related to the, the appointive ones, but we also looked at council committees. What we would throw out is a thought for the council to consider is that we start these study sessions, which are your first Thursday of the month, start them at 5:00 PM instead of 6:00. Many of you are already here because there's a committee meeting at this time. But we could use roughly that 5:00 to 6:00 PM window as sort of committee as the whole. And so what we could do is have staff presentations on items and projects, receive feedback from the whole council. What staff does like about the committees is that it's a more informal environment for us to bring you things that are maybe early on in the process. So it's a great place to more informally be like, hey, we're exploring this. These are some of the ideas we have. What are your initial thoughts? And so we don't want to lose that dynamic because we think it's really helpful. So really, this committee of the whole could function like that. If an item ends up needing much more in-depth review or discussion, or, you know, we present an idea to the council and the council says, man, we want to dive a lot deeper in that, then that could go to a committee. So really, the committees, rather than by default always happening, instead, they happen when there's a real need to have something to go to them, is the thought process. So I'm going to stop. Do you want me to do council committees and appointive committees? Or do you want me to stop and talk about, keep going? Okay, okay. All right, so now let's switch to the appointive committees. We currently have seven, plus the two additional ones that are coming. Again, each one has an agenda, packet, and staff liaison. These, we have not been doing as good of a job as we should be on consistently meeting, having consistent agendas, having consistent minutes. I've gotten some comments on recordings. So administratively, we have some work to do on these for sure. But the feedback we received on these committees is that they meet infrequently, sometimes because there's a lack of material or items to discuss. Many of the terms of people that serve on them have expired. But we also got feedback from people that are on some of these committees that they felt like their role and purpose was not always well-understood. And I think you've kind of heard a little of that tonight in those opening comments of, you know, I serve on this committee, but I feel like I'm not totally utilized how I could be. I'm not totally sure what my role is. And so taking a look at all of these, what we would sort of recommend is to not change any of the committees that are required by state code, which is the Lodging Tax Advisory Board, the Civil Service Commission. We're not recommending any changes to. And then we also got feedback from some that they felt like they were working well. So we got comments that the Police Advisory Board was working well and successful, so we're not recommending any changes there. I'm not recommending any changes at this time to the Citizens Advisory Council, not because I think it's working perfectly, but because I have sort of been told that that is a group that really functions from the council and is not staff-driven. So if you all want to make changes, we're here to support you and help you make those successful. But it's my understanding that that group is really a council-led group. We are recommending for food for thought, some changes to the Arts Commission, Human Services Advisory Board, and the Senior Services Advisory Board. So what we are recommending is that we merge those and form a new Community Enrichment Board. That would encompass the, the primary functions that each of those groups do. So you're not losing what they do. But I think it also gives us an opportunity for new role and initiatives. So I've gotten a suggestion of, man, I really would love it if this, if this group could also have a role in our Parks and Rec programming and ideas and initiatives. I think that's a great complement to really what a Community Enrichment Board is. This is kind of my opinion based on what I saw looking at these boards. Currently, these boards don't always have enough work consistently throughout the year to always meet. And so I think the experience for some of these board members is it's not that satisfying of an experience because maybe they're only meeting a few times a year, or they don't, they don't really feel like they're as engaged as maybe they'd like. So what we would throw out as an idea is that by merging them, you really create a group that has a real purpose and has a real body of work they're supposed to be doing. So they really are meeting monthly, and they actually have things that they're doing and multiple items on their agenda. And it really feels like maybe a more substantive group. So currently, you can see on there, you have quite a few expired and vacant seats on these boards. And so what we would throw out as an idea is that if the council was interested in merging the committees, perhaps we start with offering those positions to the existing members that have unexpired terms on those three groups. See who's interested, and then if there's still some vacancies, we can go through an appointment process. But, you know, first, talk to the people that are currently on those groups with the unexpired terms. And if the council was interested in doing this, we would need to come back to you with like proposed bylaws and a creation process. And like I said, we think that this would allow this new group to really meet regularly and have, again, I'm calling it a full body of work, but really things that make you feel it's a more rewarding experience to serve on it because you're doing a lot. So I'll stop there. We're happy to get feedback on both our council committee idea and the appointive committee.
So I'd like to divide that up so we don't get both subjects together. If we could start with the council committee recommendations and summary? Let's do that. Councilmember Nutting.
I, I like the idea of having a discussion as a whole. There are redundancy in several of the committees that I serve on where we hear the same thing in both committees. And then we hear it that same night at council. And I agree, it's, it's not, it's a lot of staff time. They're going to prepare for it for council anyways. And for my colleagues up here, that there has been some concern, well, we're just seeing this tonight or we got our packet on Friday and we haven't been able to do any input on it at all. And now here we're having this discussion. So I think it behooves us as a body to hear some of these things. And, and it's still, I believe that the committee's roles of being able to hear something informally and just having it bounced off of us, not being a, hey, this is what we're really doing, but let's, let's get some input. I believe it still has to be that way. And however that looks, it's just a discussion. And, but we also, I, we also need to time-box it as well. I mean, so I like the five to six, and then council has to start at six. So maybe with a 10-minute break in between or something like that. So that's, that's my input on the council committee.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I like the council as a whole idea with the, the idea that a committee could break out to get more in-depth. I mean, my initial concept of committee work is that's kind of where the ideas get generated that are going to eventually become an ordinance or something like that in front of the council. And we don't, don't do that. There simply has not been a lot of that. Ideas are proposed and they go to committee. Sometimes they result in ordinances, sometimes they don't. But there's not a generation of, you know, these are the things that we need to do. So there does need to be some room for in-depth trying to hash out what an ordinance or what a particular plan. I mean, we've had some pretty good discussions on comp plans and things like that. But in general, a lot of the committees or staff presentations and sort of learning and educating us on, on things, they're passive. And I'd like to see a role for committee work to be more active, if even if that's the exception, and then use the committee as a whole for a lot of the, you know, let's present the idea and get a generalized discussion.
Councilmember Harris, and Councilmember Grace Motzwi.
Thank you. So I'm not entirely wild about this idea. I think regardless of our differences, the committees, and, and I fully acknowledge all of the weaknesses of, I mean, my Dan Brewer joke is just that, you know, he, he gave a presentation one time to council, and he, they compliment, we all complimented him on how great it was. And he said, well, it ought to be, this is the fourth time I've given it in two days. So there is redundancy. So there is redundancy, but the thing is, regardless of our differences, these committees, one develops, or hopefully would develop, a certain expertise. Over time, if you serve on transportation for a while, environment, you gain a fluency in certain things that you're just not going to get at a committee of the whole kind of a deal. And I'm, you know, I'm just thinking about the things that we cover regarding, you know, water permits and the storm rates and so on, and it's just been incredibly helpful to have that persistence. And I think it would dilute somehow the decision-making. It sounds very democratic, I get it, you know, and I fully acknowledge the, I think there are too many committees, for sure, we can argue which ones, and they are redundant. But having, but the notion that Deputy Mayor, you know, the idea of having an idea originate at a committee, get worked through, and then move forward to the full council, it's a very productive and worthy goal. If we haven't been doing it efficiently, okay, that's fine, but then we should fix that. But there is value in that layered approach, and I'm thinking about how many consent items or discussions we've had over things like public records fees. Well, that's the kind of thing that a finance committee, it's these little tiddly things that a finance committee can do. I was impressed last year that, you know, when we have the, have these issues, we work them out, and then they move forward to the council, and presto, they're done. But, you know, I'll defer to the will of the council on this because it definitely is redundant. All of your points in your recommendation are extremely well-taken, and I've said to you for your first year, yeah, we got to try something different. So even though I'm not particularly comfortable with it, you know, I'm a person of my word if this is what you really think you need. But I would just caution finally, demonstrate what value there is in this for the public. I get what it means for staff. Who doesn't want to have more hours? But if you eliminate a public safety committee, does that mean more public safety? If you eliminate a transportation committee, does that mean better roads? And I'm not being, you know, I'm saying, what is, if you eliminate a finance committee, which we just started, does that mean a better budget book? I would have preferred that you brought forward this item you mentioned, improving the agenda items. There should have been a value proposition for the public. Every time you suggest something that saves staff time, and I'm not grandstanding here, there should be a value proposition for the residents of the city. But that said, you know, whatever everybody wants to do, you know, cool breeze. Thank you.
Just a moment here. All right. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I'm not completely sold on the committee of the whole. I do think that there could be valuable work done in individual committees. It depends on the structure and how much guidance each one needs. And I think that even if we did move away from some of the committees and consolidated others, each one would benefit from defined goals, some bylaws, perhaps a mission, and some jurisdictional, like, here's what counts as, should go to this committee, and this definitely should count and go to this committee. Because I think one of the issues that I have found is that you can make the argument that any issue can go to any committee, and there's not a clear charter that says, no, this one should go here, this one should go here. It's like, they all overlap. And so if we decide to do committee as a whole, and we decide to consolidate, we decide to keep some, that would be great. I just believe that they all could use a little bit more structure, and folks would have clear expectations on what you're going to be doing as a participant and what the outcome of your participation could be. Thank you.
So I have a quick question, has been brought up a couple times. Were we considering with the committee of the whole that if a specific decision did need to be hashed out in the weeds, that there still would be an opportunity to break out? Let's see, for example, would the assignments still stay intact so that if that group of the finance committee maybe needed to do a little project, that they would actually meet separately, but basically for briefings? This is generally for briefings and light head nods and things like that, that the cast with the committee of the whole is mostly for, but if there was something specific to work on?
Well, the thought was that we bring, and we can morph this and meld it however you want, but the thought was, we bring things initially to the council of the whole, and if you feel like it's a briefing, because some things we think are a briefing are not a briefing to you. You know, like, you don't know until you get in there, the council really wants to have hands on it. So things would go to you all, and if you're like, great, sounds good, move forward, then that's what we do. But if some issue is really, you know, meaty, and all of a sudden there's a ton of discussion, then that council, that committee would get like, oh, we are going to have a meeting this month. So really, I think the way to think of it is, instead of by default, there are always six committee meetings every single month, and sometimes there's things that go on that agenda, and sometimes candidly, staff are like finding things to put on the agenda. Instead of that, instead, it's you meet when there is definitely something to talk about.
Okay. And so in that model, for example, at the beginning of the two-year cycle, we all still get assignments of subject matter, transportation, environment, et cetera. And then we meet when the council of the whole remands a subject to that committee. And then that could also answer the desire to be a subject matter expert, correct? I'm going to take one more bit of time here. I just remember when I was first assigned to my committees when I was first elected, and ever since, every time I'm on a committee, I even, I attend regional events or committees under, or webinars under that subject matter, so that I, so in our subject of interest, in our assignment, even if the committee of the whole, even if in ad hoc mode, we don't even meet, we could still nurture that subject matter. Okay. Had some hands up. I think that Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes. Could you please bring the city council committees up on the screen? So I agree with a couple comments. One of the things, like, I'll take transportation, for example. Over the last seven-some years, I've essentially become more of an expert in that area. I know the history of the projects, what's been done in other committees, regionally, bring that in. I see more kind of a compromise between the kind of committee at large. I do, I see like, for example, finance and economic development could probably be together. I could see municipal facilities and transportation and probably environment probably working together. Public safety, it's probably, it's such an important issue, and it's our number-one priority, probably its own, for the sake of that. So I could see, I could see that being more my, maybe a mid-level solution. But I agree, they do allow a little bit less formal conversation, and that's important. But I also believe that there was a conversation about, well, this item being on this committee, and this committee, and this committee. I think staff can come and go, here's the things we want to put on some committees, our recommendation goes into this committee. Now, the council's whole could say, no, no, we want to put it in public safety rather than transportation, for whatever reason. And that could give a criteria of where, as a community body, we're deciding which committee it should go to, if it's not like cut and dried. But I do believe that we are able to discuss and kind of explore a lot more than what I would believe a committee at a whole would do, but I could see us reducing these to half of what it is today. So that's just my input.
So that is actually the original thought staff had, was we would just condense these. And we're happy to, that was our original idea, but, so we're happy to do that. We got some initial feedback from a few of you of concerns of, well, then there's only three chairs, and is everybody on the equal number of committees? Like, the kind of appointment process of who got serving on committees kind of started to kind of, we sensed some anxiety about that. So we're happy to condense the committees, but just keep in mind then there'd be sort of a funky distribution of not everybody's a chair and things like that.
Councilmember Harris.
So this is, this is really good. Just the other, I keep coming back to good old ChatGPT, but, you know, believe it or not, the only, the only committee up here that has persisted, since I've been watching, is environment. And I believe it's because it's an enterprise fund. I always said that there should be a Marina Committee, because that's the other enterprise fund, and that would create the persistent planning, but over time. But there, it used to be that public safety and transportation were one committee. It used to be that finance and economic development were one committee. So these have been, these have flexed over time. And for, you know, for what that's worth, I just keep coming back to this, I'll just close, I'm sorry for being rhetorical, but the way human beings work, you either go to a committee of the whole, or you maintain some kind of standing committee structure. If you try to do both, basically, the standing committees will just wither and become nothing. You can't have this kind of a deal, you can't expect people to maintain expertise and interest in a specific issue if they don't know when they're meeting, or, you know, if they're just being kind of an on-call service. And that's just my thought. Thank you.
Any more thoughts? Okay, so a specific question for you. So do you, so what is the guidance that you need right here? Do you need?
I'm looking for, do you want to do the recommendation? Do you want to stay how you are now? Or do you want me to come back with a different idea?
What does that mean?
I propose number three. I think we, I think you've received valuable feedback and can, you know, mull it over, and I'll just say personally, I trust that whatever you come back after the mullage will be something that I'll support.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I think option number one, the recommendation, to try something new. We can always change it if we, if it's not working. And I like the idea, and I disagree, that I think people will maintain an area of expertise if it's something they're interested in, and that's why they're on the committee in the first place. So some of us can be counted on to do that at least. So I would like to try number one, and we can reconsider.
So to clarify, number one is committee of the whole with the ability to remand.
Yep. And something I just wanted to add, because it was in the packet write-up, but, you know, Councilmember Harris and Deputy Mayor Steinmetz mentioned it. We could just try this through the end of the summer, and if it's not working, then we go back. Or, I mean, it doesn't have to be a permanent thing. I think I wrote in the packet, like, we could just pilot this for a few months and see how it goes. So that's definitely really possible.
Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then Councilmember Nutting. Or, but, okay. I'm looking this way a lot, so I don't, I don't get the order over here.
Right, okay. I would say that option number one is fine. It looks like there's been some thought put into it already. You've gotten some suggestions from us. We could try it out as a pilot, and if it goes well, we might keep it.
Okay. Councilmember Nutting.
Yeah, I agree. With Councilmember Grace Matsui and Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, it's try it out as a pilot, see where it goes, and see if it's working or not working. And we can always change it back towards the middle end of the year. So those are my thoughts.
All right. Any other? Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I think that part of the value here is having a new city manager is that we're here, we've been doing it the way we've been doing it, you know, let's try something, let's, you know, there's experiences that exist outside of the realm of what we're doing, what we're used to. And so, you know, look to you for, look to the city manager for, you know, just some ideas on, you know, what your experience in the past has been, and not be afraid to sit there and say, you know, yeah, we've got to adopt something new because the way we've been doing it, it just hasn't been sufficient, so.
I, do you have, okay, go ahead.
Well, I'll just say, I'm, I will vote no on number one, not because I'm, you know, not because I'm not willing to give it a shot, but this is simply too momentous to decide in one touch, as they say. If this were, until last year, we had a two-touch system, as they say, and to me, this is such a major change. Why would you make it without a certain amount of mulling based on our feedback? But again, you know, if that's the will of the council, great.
Well, I guess I have one more, one more observation about the value proposition. I did want to mention, I know some, there've been a couple of people say, why does the mayor always let everybody talk first and then, you know, wait till the end? I just, it's a nice way to let everybody express any idea that they might have first, and then if everything gets said, I don't need to say anything. And, but about the value proposition, there is one, whether it's direct or indirect, we are reducing futility of staff time. And that means that people in building and planning could attend more hours to the comp plan, or more attention to permitting, or more attention to engineers can, you know, it makes sense that if the staff is not engaged in futility, they can attend to things that serve the community, whatever that is, because really, ultimately, that's what we're all here for. So if we can save time doing that, we can attend more and more to the community. That's the value proposition. So I am also in favor of the, give it a try. So would you like a vote on this?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So all in favor of trying the COW, the Committee of the Whole, for a while with an option of remanding subjects? Raise your right hand. Oh, wait a minute, I need to take a motion? I need to take a motion. Do I have a motion with what I just said?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the motion, and Councilmember Nutting for the second, any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
I think it would be lovely if, six months down the road, you come back with a progress report that indicates the value proposition. If the idea is that this will lead to faster permitting, you know, and a brighter, whiter smile and so forth, please, we need to know that. Thank you.
So smile more if you want the committee of the whole. Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Mahoney and Councilmember Harris opposed.
I'll just go over.
I know, really. Five to, motion passes five to two.
Can I just confirm without, I mean, we say we're going to try it out, do we want to try it till, like, the end of the summer, and then we'll review?
Pardon?
Six months?
Six months is good. I think, you, how you raised your hand, Councilmember Harris, go ahead.
So I'm just, if you, again, if you let ChatGPT do her evil work, that's kind of the narrative that happened when we ended the Planning Commission.
Well, no, you already talked about this. What did you need to do for the six months? We're just on the six months.
I don't, I don't favor any kind of timeline. It's like we're making a decision.
Okay, well, that was our only question. Okay, thank you. All right, I think that you have the direction you want. All right. So, then.
I was getting tired and thinking we were done. We're not.
We're not done, we have an ex-
We're almost done.
Yeah, well. Yeah, yeah. So.
And so, this was, we do the next one, this here one? Okay, this was to merge arts, human services, and senior services, the Community Enrichment Board, with sort of those functions plus perks. And we would come back to you with like bylaws and, you know, forming the committee.
All right, Councilmember Nutting.
I, I'm in favor of this. It makes sense. Being part of the Arts Commission, and had been part of the Senior Services Advisory Committee in the past, it just, it just makes sense. So, that's my comments.
Okay. Any other input? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I, I, I do like the idea of sort of combining these and making a more functional, year-round Citizens Committee process. But, the idea of the Senior Services Advisory people advising on what bands to play in the park is, is, is leaving a little discordant thought. I, I don't know, certainly can do it, but you may not be attracting the same level of people. And I don't know how to address that issue, and so I'd be open to some sort of way to reconcile that, if, if you have some input on that.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I'm currently the liaison to the Senior Services Advisory Committee, and I would say that that statement doesn't actually capture what we do. So, while they could do that, if there was proposed legislation that was aimed only at seniors, I'm sure that they could provide some sort of advisory opinion, but it doesn't happen all that often. And so, instead, we work on other items. And so, it kind of goes back to, what's the charter? What's the bylaws? What are we doing? What we hope the participation is going to give? These need an update.
Yeah, that's the existing language, which, right, yep.
Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
I'm really sorry.
Keep going, no.
Are you sure?
Yep, yep.
And I don't want to discount the things the Senior Advisory Committee does do. It's actually a great committee, and we do other activities, and we talk about how to connect people to services as seniors, how to avoid fraud. We have the shred event, and we do field trips. And so, it's really a great committee, but I wouldn't say that that is its primary focus.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I just, I, I know that there are other things. My mother was actually on the Senior Services Advisory Committee, and you don't want her picking the music. At least I don't. I mean, I think it can be worked through, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of disparate pieces in one committee here. And it begs the question of the size of that committee, the makeup of that committee, and how do you reconcile all of that?
Councilmember Harris.
So, I will vote no on this as well, for the same reason that I voted no on the last item. There is simply too much material here to digest and decide upon in one meeting. I believe this should, in fact, these should have been two totally separate items. And, you know, we should think about them, because they are big changes. Doesn't mean that they're, you know, the wrong thing to do. All of the same issues of redundancy and participation and so on, maintained. But it's something that we should not decide upon in one night. It's simply too much stuff. But regardless, my big objection to a lot of this stuff, as I've said, is that I appreciate everybody who participates, but it is not the case that the people who participate in many of these committees represent the totality of the city. Like, not even close, across many domains. And somehow, you'll need to capture that, or we should capture that. But at a baseline, we should be maintaining recordings and minutes and work product of all of these committees. And frankly, what I have heard from some of them is that they like being private. And that has to stop. Okay? If you're on a public advisory committee, you agree to have a candid and friendly discussion with your neighbors, and it shouldn't require, you know, an in-private world in order to express your feelings about, you know, your community. Thank you.
Taking notes. Just a moment. Okay. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Oxiger.
Just a quick suggestion, because I think this is an excellent opportunity. We can use AI, ChatGPT, or a number of other ones, to take the minutes. And that way, we have a minute, the minutes of what occurred. And we're not taking any more staff time to do that.
Point of order, that is not what ChatGPT does.
You're interrupting, you can raise your hand, just a moment. So, let him finish. Are you, you're good? Okay. I'll call on you after Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you. It strikes me that, you know, we have, in consolidating these committees, this is going to be a substantial change in the way we've been doing things. And, you know, we do have, you know, each of these committees does have, have some, you know, expertise in their area. I like the idea of Councilmember Harris about, we should do a second touch on this one, because I think it behooves us to go back to these committees and say, this is what we're proposing. How is it going to affect you? And how is it, you know, do you feel that this is going to work? Because they may come back to us and say, yeah, if you're going to do it that way, we don't want to be any part of it. Or, you know, they don't feel that they have, that they want to take on the breadth of all of this. So, I think, in particular with this consolidation, we do need to go out to the committees and say, what does this look like to you? And that way, then, you know, again, this is, this is bringing the public into the process. We can sit up here and say, oh, yeah, this, 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 and everything. But, you know, if the, if the people that are actually, you know, on the ground doing the work are going, yeah, that's not going to work, then we've wasted a lot of time. So, I do think that this is one that we should revisit. And I think what, we've got Senior Services and-
Arts Commission.
Yeah.
Human.
No, but I mean, as far as, you know, have meetings coming up real quick here.
So, quite a few of these groups have not met in quite a while, which kind of, you get, some of it is staff changes. You saw, you will see on there, some of the staff liaisons are no longer with us. But no, I think we can absolutely do that. If the council wants us to, I'd be happy to, we'll reach out to each of them, have a conversation, and see what their thoughts are.
And I would, even though they're, I believe, on the Human Services Advisory Committee, most of them have, most of their terms have expired and stuff, I would, you know, reach out to bring those people back in, you know, at least for this discussion. Again, let's get as broad a representation as we possibly can.
Yep, happy to.
Councilmember Harris.
So, the beauty of these meetings now being recorded on YouTube is that it automatically transcribes everything we're saying. So, we have a transcription service, and so if you make the various appointive committees recorded, ta-da, that notion of minutes and everything, it takes care of itself. So, that's part of it. The other thing is, the Human Services Advisory Committee, I mean, the value of the members, they, you know, when you look at the applications, they would always, you know, talk about their accomplishments relevant to social work and so forth. And I think that really has some meaning. I just, putting it out in public, my concern has always been that we don't get enough applicants. We tend to get the same groups over and over again. And if we really want to broaden our outreach to nonprofits, as we just had this summit thing, then daylighting those meetings basically makes that more possible. If you conflate all of these purposes into one thing, I'm a little bit nervous as to having people evaluate grants who are also looking at the, you know, issues of the dance, or the arts, public art thing, or whatever. Again, I'll defer ultimately to your wisdom, but, you know, some of these committees really, people do put passion into thinking about these human services grants. I mean, they're really life-changing for certain people. And the people who serve take that very seriously. So, just, you know, something to think about. But again, daylighting these things, recording them and so on, I think that will attract more people into the pool. Thank you.
No, that's a good point. We can, sorry, can I say something? We can absolutely do that. And, you know, I've heard the comments about, like, what is the value proposition to the public? And I think that's a fair comment. Some of this also is the reality of the staff liaisons that worked for all three of these committees are no longer with us. They're part of budget reductions. And we've added two new committees, Airport and Planning. Now, mind you, those are different people that are impacted by that, staff-wise. But that was part of the thought process, too, was, you know, each of these groups has to be staffed, and we need to be doing a better job, because it's definitely become apparent, we've not been keeping up with minutes and agendas and meetings. And, I mean, candidly, keeping, I think it's like, would be up to a total of like, ten, ten committees on top of the council committees, on top of the council meetings, on top of the study session, is a lot for a limited staff.
Okay, well, I do have a few observations and questions. So, I also agreed with the recommendation about bringing together people that have recently expired, and grabbing hold of that energy, because I think that those people really want to serve the community. Sometimes it's just they want to serve, but sometimes it is specific, like Councilmember Harris said. About the committees don't, don't well represent the entire community. I think that that is true of every committee, everywhere, in every place, in every business. Eighty percent of the, twenty percent of the people do eighty percent of the work. You just, that, that's the nature of volunteerism, I think. Consolidate, the consolidation of this, you know, I think that, what if the committee was larger, and it was composed of the subcommittees? What you save there is, let's say you have three different, these four people, these three people, and these two people, but it's a large committee. What it does is you still only have one staff person writing one agenda, but you have three groups of people coming to report out on what they have done during the month. And, but they still have the same, the same job as, I mean, in other words, you, you could make a compilation or a consolidation with subcommittee. So, the CAC is a very large committee of, what, nine to twelve, nine, twelve people? Yeah, it's, it's large. And then with the alternates that come also. So, I don't think there's a problem with having a large committee as, if there's, it's full of subcommittees. And I do have to say, if the Human Services Advisory does everything it's supposed to do, it should be busy year-round, pretty much year-round, for both years, because there's accountability factor. These people are supposed to be visiting, divide up these service providers, and have, they have a chart that they're supposed to fill out and visit all of these places. That's a lot of work. If, so, if that hasn't been happening, I could see how. But if we have people who are active to do that, so I, I do think if that is filled and attended to, it's, it's busy. Okay, that's my input on all of those. Councilmember Harris.
So, I'll just, at the risk of beating the dead equine, it would, just dividing this into standing committees and appointive is somewhat arbitrary. I proposed a year ago, you know, I can see, I could have seen a hybrid thing, where the Environment Committee hosted an Airport Committee. Because frankly, a lot of these appointive committees really only will have three, four meetings worth of stuff every year. And you could see, saying, okay, you've got seven meetings a year for stormwater, and then four, five for the appointive people. And, you know, consolidate resources that way. We're obviously going in another direction, but to the extent that you review this over time, consider that a hybrid approach to all of this stuff might be better. That's just my observation, watching the Burian Airport Committee, you know, they muddle along since 2018, and it's really tough maintaining interest on any issue. And the moment the stamp goes away, you know, just, it's, it's difficult. So, just keep that in the back, back of your mind, you know, to the extent you can. Thank you.
Anything else? So, you've gotten a lot of input. Do you have a specific question now?
Well, I think what I'm going to do is, let's meet with the three groups, let us mull this over, and we will come back with something else.
Okay. Okay, got some nods. All right. So, I think, so you feel good about the entire committee discussion? You feel like you got the direction and input you needed?
Yes, we are piloting council of the whole, and I'm coming back on the other committees.
Okay. Good. So, next up, we have an executive session. And the purpose of the executive session is to have a discussion about the performance of a public employee in accordance with RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one G. I expect the session to last for thirty minutes until eight twenty-five. Oh, I should have said, there will be no, we don't expect any council decision, should have been before I hit this. Don't expect any action.